Do we have anything on that?
They're in the package.
We have motion and second to approve the minutes from the Finance Committee for July 27, 2017. Anything further from the council? All of them in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. The first one being a donation from Verona Wine &amp; Design for pool repairs. Susan.
We received a donation to help to pay the costs of the pool repairs that are going to be needed for the leak that's in the pool that we had talked about. They had a wine tasting event and dedicated some portion of the proceeds to that and sent the town a check for it. I just included that so you'd be aware that they had done so.
So where will that go? Will that go towards the pool renovations, just in that account?
It's in the pool reserve account where that goes because that's where the cost of the repairs to the pool will have to come from.
Could we also, as we get further into this pool repairs, actually talk with the Y about possibly some type of a small, like little water park themed thing there with sprinklers and stuff? I've seen it in several communities and it seems like everywhere I see them, there's tons of kids playing in them, you know, water spurting up and coming out of a palm tree and all that stuff, so... Especially if they have to dig up some lines anyway, it might be a good opportunity to tie into those. Any comments on that?
When is that expected to be done?
After the end of the season.
Right at the end, yeah.
When are they going to drain that? Sometime around the 24th, 25th, something like that. It's only another week or so. Item B, Oliver Associates Letter Sent to Respond to C S O Permit Requirements. Susan.
The town is required every five years to do an update to its C S O master plan. And the only, and the town had one C S O, number 13, which is located back this way, that had not had an overflow in more than 10 years and...
Excuse me, what is C S O?
Combined Sewer Overflow.
Thank you.
C S O. Anyway.
I just didn't know what it was.
They, I'm sorry, talking in initials again, that it hadn't worked and it would no longer need to be licensed. The town could close it, fill it, and not be responsible. And when the town installed the swirl concentrator about 10 years ago, it was told that that was the final piece in stormwater separation so that you, the town did not have to go looking for more lines to try and, because it was not cost-effective to do so, and that any overflows treated by infiltration would be handled by this C S O, which you spent $3.1 million to build. And in this permit, they identified that it was now a C S O, a C S O device, and that it would need to have a master plan done on it every five years, which can cost tens of thousands of dollars. And so since the town had constructed that swirl concentrator under the advice and with the approval of D E P as the solution to that issue, this letter is a response that says respectfully, no. That, that isn't the way that we wish to move forward and we want you to reconsider what you're requiring us to do in this regard. And since this letter went to them, they have called and indicated that they would withdraw this master plan requirement and not require the town to justify the existence of that swirl concentrator every five years. So that's what the letter is, that's what it did. It accomplished what it needed to where, until I get the hit in writing, I'm still... But it's, you know, it, the pushback was effective in terms of justifying the fact that we, the town has already done everything it's been asked to do and it should not be asked again every five years to justify the existence of that swirl concentrator that they instructed you to put in.
Did Oliver just do this on our behalf as part of our consultants for that? That was, that was a very nice letter, I mean, the way it was written. He did a nice job, the way it was laid out and written.
We had a great meeting that, we met with them before this letter was written. We met with them and verbally said all the things that is in this letter, but the response that we got back was, you have to do a master plan, you have to do this, you have to do this, you have to do this, and so...
Are we expecting that letter from them soon?
Yes, I copied the Commissioner on it, who sent me back an email saying he thought that this item would be resolved. So that's what that is. A great long letter about our swirl concentrator down there and why the town should not have to continue justify its existence after it was identified as the solution to that problem.
Any further questions? We'll go into item C, Oliver Associates Letter to Residents, impact of the interceptor sewer inspection. Susan.
That's just a copy of the letter that was sent to residents whose property the Ted Berry Associates went on to camera and cleaned the line behind from Hannaford back. And that was just a notification letter. I put it in the packet so the council would be aware what they told people before they went on their property.
Okay, any questions? Okay, item D, weekly construction memo for 8417.
That is just the, what's coming down to the end of this project. Substantial completion on the project was attained this week, meaning that the only thing left to do now is punch list items that are going around and checking to see if everything's exactly the way it's supposed to be or something at Ding that needs fixing or there's electrical equipment that's not programmed right, those kind of things. And final completion will be, is 30 days from Wednesday of this week. And the, it's in my manager's report, but we're planning an open house on September 25th in the afternoon for residents of the community, elected officials, and, and the same from Orland and Verona, who participate in this treatment plant, that it will be the ribbon cutting and it's, it's been in operation now for a number of months in terms of doing secondary treatment, but it officially gets turned over the town, to the town, from the construction company in terms of responsibility. We also, what comes with, on everything and all the work, in addition to mechanical warranties, there's a one-year warranty on all of the other, everything else that goes with the facility. So that will, that will commence as a next one.
Any questions? Okay, item E, letter in reference to hiring of personnel with a safety grant, or is it the safer grant?
It's the safer grant. I received a letter that wasn't signed, that, that talked about what the writer felt should be the requirements for personnel hired under the terms of that grant I included in the...
Not signed?
No.
Okay, item F, Old Chapman Farm Grand Opening, August 19, 2017.
Yes, the Great Pond Mountain Conservation Trust is on, from 10 to noon on Saturday, August 19, is having a grand opening for that, the new green space, open space trails that they have there. It's a 65-acre parcel, it was donated in 2015, but it's August 19 from 10 to noon and the rain date is August 20.
And that's up near our sludge storage site. Any questions? Okay, we'll go on to item six, new ordinances to be considered or introduced. First one being, shall an ordinance be introduced titled Amendment to the Town Council/Manager Charter of the Town of Bucksport, Article II, Town Council, Article III, Administrator Offices and Employees, and Article VII, Budget? Such ordinance being for the purpose of clarifying when an ordinance order or resolve is required for action or taken by the Town Council. I can go on further, but that's basically what, what it's all about. Susan, you want to?
Well, this is, is notifying that this is being, will be introduced for a public hearing. And it, it clarifies that the charter identifies orders, resolves, and ordinances, and this clarifies when each of those kind of things is appropriate, how thing, when things become effective, et cetera. It's a, an administrative housekeeping more than anything else than it is. It's not a change in terms of what these are, but it clarifies when you use them. We primarily act by resolve here, but anyway. So this is to, this is to introduce it for a public hearing.
Tonight we'll be setting a date for the public hearing. Any questions? Any questions from the public on that? Now we're going to go to item B, shall an ordinance be introduced titled Amendment to the Bucksport Town Code, Chapter Two, Administration? Such ordinance being for the purpose of changing the name of the charter to clarify its purpose, reformatting the charter, improving syntax, removing several outdated workplace safety regulations, clarifying employment classifications and benefits, updating workplace and smoking policy, and removing benefit conflicts with union contract provisions. Susan.
This again is an administrative review. The ordinance committee went over this. This regard is in regard primarily to personnel guidelines that are contained in the charter and this also will be put up in the public hearing.
Okay. And can we actually set the public hearing for both of these on the same day? Any questions? Questions from the public? Okay, we'll go on to item seven, discussion items for managers clarification or direction or council discussions or input on issues. First one being Down East Transportation, $900 error in appropriation request.
This year, we did our budget, we got appropriation requests from outside agencies, and Down East Transportation's request was $900 less than it had been for a number of years. I didn't question it. I didn't call them up and say, did you really mean $900 less? But then they sent us the invoice for the funding and it was the old number. And so I called them up and said, I have a copy of your request and it was $900 less than what your invoice is for. And the director who did it said, I made a mistake. And it, we were requesting the exact same amount that we've requested every year for many years. And their, their total request comes through around $3,300, but they only got, you know, it was, it was a $900 error. It's on here because I'm asking if you want to use $900 from some other funding source to make this up because this funds the bus and the taxi program that we've committed to and for the amount of service provided, it's a small amount of money. And I, I mean, certainly legally you don't have to, but I would hate to see it impact the program because of $900 that was an error in a, in a request. And they haven't said that that would happen, but they're not highly funded.
Second. Well, what fund do you want to take it out of?
Whichever one the town manager sees.
Take it out of the town manager's salary.
It was my mistake, but we might as well, right?
Undesignated funds?
Undesignated funds.
All right, who gave the second?
I did.
Is that all right, you gave it that way? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to take $900 on the undesignated funds to correct the error for Down East Transportation. Anything further from the public? From the council?
I just have one quick thing. We, in our, in our budget, we have them for almost $3,600. So you're saying?
No, their, their budget this year was 25...
I'm just, and maybe I'm looking in the wrong place, but when I look at social agencies, Down East Transportation, I see 3,592.
That's not what they, that's not what they...
That's not what we have in the budget?
That's not what's in the budget.
Okay.
That's what was the prior year that had been filled in before we got the actual thing. But yeah, no, they're, we had 26...
We'll bring it up to 3,592.
It brings it up to 3,592.
All right. We had it in there and I'm just kind of curious if they really did have a mistake or if we're...
No, 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 that we, their request thing that we ended up in the final budget is...
Okay. I'll say.
26.
Okay. Anything else from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Item D, Wilson Hall. Susan.
We, we put a project for Wilson Hall out to bids some time ago, which involved roof estimate and window replacement. And we received two bids. Jeff, do you have those, that information, if you could share that?
The bids we received were from Wayne Hanscom and McLaughlin Builders. Wayne Hanscom proposed a bid of $220,500 for the roof repair and $14,000 to replace the windows. McLaughlin Builders proposed $149,498 for the roof repair and $36,000 for the window replacement. So Wayne Hanscom was, was high on the roof and low on the windows.
And one, one proposal was to put roof rafters back the way they originally were or similar, and the other one was to put up roof trusses.
Right. Wayne was proposing to repair what's there. McLaughlin Builders was proposing to remove the roof and replace the roof with trusses and replace the tower as well, too.
Thank you.
In looking at, at what the town is trying to do, or what the council is trying to do, which is preserve the building so that it can be renovated and understanding that the primary source of deterioration is the roof, basically in the area of the coupler that's there, that's, where things are really bad. And so I'm, I'm not sure that either of the proposals that we've received is cost-effective if we don't have an end user and if there's some other alternative that may stabilize the property without spending a quarter of a million dollars.
We, we have talked about this for, since I've been on the council for several, several years. With this number here, I would almost, you know, we hear what the town wants to do and what we hear. I'd say we put it on the ballot and say, take out a, take out a bond issue of a number whichever we decide to go with. And if the town wants to do it, then we spend the money and we do it from what the town people are saying because we have beat this around the bush for several years and we don't have, we're not any closer than where we were when we started. And we sit here and we, and we have this place full of people and we hear anecdotally about what folks want to do, but we're just, we're treading water. We're not making a decision one way or the other and until, you know, if we put it on a ballot in November and say, this is what we're going to do, we can get a finalized thing and we get the will of the people and if somebody doesn't want to vote, then they don't vote on it. But then, you know, I think we've done our due diligence to truly put it out there and listen to what people want to do.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, but this could be a late turnout election year and a relatively small number of people could be making the decisions. It concerns me a little bit and I'm wondering if we couldn't, not for purposes of not making, I... That's always a hard decision to put it out to the public. I mean, we're, we're empowered with the idea to make the decisions, but I think in this case that that's not a bad idea, but I am concerned about the late turnout this year.
I've battled with this probably even before you got on the council. We came awful close to tearing this building down. It's an iconic landmark in the community. $175, $200,000 is an awful lot of money to spend when we really don't have an, an end product of what we're going to do with it. But am I ready to, so I don't know if I'm even ready to accept either one of these proposals. I would, I think, support looking at possibly just getting the coupler taken off the building and put on the ground and basically a acceptable patch put over the roof so it doesn't deteriorate anymore. And if that's a minimal cost, say a less cost than to tear the building down, I think that would be a good option. I, I really feel that, you know, Bucksport, a lot of people are still waiting to see how we're going to recover from the loss of the mill. You know, do we want to just say, put $200,000 in it without any long-term plan? Or do we just put a, like, secure the coupler area and in, again, hopes, I guess, really isn't a plan. But, you know, three to five years from now, there may be somebody come along that's, that's willing to put the $200,000 in the roof or, or... I, I would like to at least go out and try to get some quotes over the next two weeks to see if, you know, we can get that coupler down and a patch put on for a minimal amount of money. And if the bids come back in two weeks and it's outrageous, then I'm all for going out and, and putting something on the referendum. But that's, that's again, just how I, I feel about the situation, so... Any other comments?
Okay, I'm also, in our, in our charter, we actually just was looking at it, but anything over $250,000 has to go to the referendum anyway. When I first got on the council, I thought that was a lot of money, especially for me as well. So I think even pushing $100,000, I think, is something that would be viable to maybe look into as far as talking with the town people, whether it be a hearing or whatnot, or going to the, to a ballot. I'm kind of in somewhat of that type of field as well and I hear people, almost 60/40 saying, and again, 40% saying they want, they would like to keep it, 60% saying just demolish it, sell the property to somebody or put something up that, that's actually usable of a sort. So for that kind of money, I believe you could really do quite a bit of work with the property rather than just keeping it from deteriorating anymore, so... My, my idea would be to, to definitely have some kind of a hearing on it if that, if that be, or put it on the ballot, again, and people that do want to vote, if that's something that's worth coming to vote at the polls for would be worth it. But again, and just being honest, and I don't believe putting that kind of money into that building would, would help the town out in any, any sense, so, again, my, my two cents as well. I, I think upgrading the town to our new, our new millennium or whatever you want to call it would be, would be more, more beneficial to the town.
I agree with the town manager's remarks and as there, there is no long-term plan exists right now. We have already, months ago, put this out to advertise that, you know, looking for someone to come in with, to date, no response, as far as I know. I don't have the stomach for putting a quarter million dollars into the building with no one, you know, having stepped forward to, to make a commitment, hey, if you do this, we will, you know, carry forth from there, so... But I do believe in the will of the people and I, I think Peter's suggestion is a good one to put it up on the, on the ballot. One last thing, I, I don't really agree with lowering our 250 down to 100,000 as Councilor York has suggested. I think if we did that, then every time, I mean, the cost of everything, if we want to buy a new dump truck or a new backhoe, that would, we'd have to wait for, to vote on it in town and I, I don't think that's appropriate. But anyway, my two cents.
I, I still don't think that it would really delay us possibly putting it on the ballot if we went out and at least looked at the possibility of taking the coupler off and securing the roof and then have that part of the ballot if we decide to go that route because it's going to cost, several years ago, we looked at it, it was going to be like $45,000 to take it down, to tear the building down. And once it's down, it's, it's gone. It's gone forever.
I understand it's a double brick wall.
You know, maybe I'm too sentimental about a historical building like that. But I mean, if we could just basically, it might only be like 25 to, to take the coupler down and, and put the roof on it so no more water gets into the building.
It won't hurt to get a bid. We've already done bids on the roof.
And we still have time to...
And let's have time to...
And we still have time to put it on the ballot. But I think we ought to, if you're going to put it on the ballot, it should be, are you for tearing it down? Are you for putting a new roof on it? Or are you looking for some type of a repair to the roof? I don't know if you can have a ballot with multiple questions like that, but...
Oh my gosh. It's August and the ballots have to be prepared in September, the beginning of September. So while this could be a straw poll that you include on your...
Like a non-binding...
A non-binding to get, to gain the public's, there is not time between now and September when she has to have the ballots done to do this.
To get bids.
To, no, to go through the legal steps to get something on the ballot. You know, there's a process that your charter defines for how you get stuff on the, a referendum ballot and it's got time limits and those kind of things. So a, a non-binding referendum, you can, you can do it.
I think that's what they did with the fireworks and that's been good for most people.
Well, no, I'm not suggesting, I'm saying it can be on, it just, I don't want to mislead you to thinking that it's...
Need to know the exact timeframe of when we need to have it.
We can look that up, but it, you know, it's August 10.
But, you know, I, I don't have any problem making a decision if we, if the council elects to, to vote on it and do it that way. I also don't disagree that we should get all the facts first and if there's another option, get that information. It's, it's one of those that I don't think there's any clear sense of where the public wants to go on this.
I don't think you're going to, the last election, how many voted, registered voters do we have, Kathy?
We've got about 3,800.
3,800. How many voted in the last election? Roughly.
2,500.
Yeah, okay, that was a pretty good turnout.
But that was a...
But the one, in the off-election years, is it true that...
We have 1,500.
Yeah, yeah.
That's pushing...
Fewer people making, it's not... Fewer people making, it's not, and, you know, it's, it's a tough decision, and I think we're elected to make the tough decisions. But, I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to putting it out on the ballot, and I know it's not binding on us, but it's pretty hard when you do that sometimes to take action that you're sort of ignoring whatever who thinks is important enough to come to the ballot, and come to a...
It doesn't send a very good message if we put it out, and we get the information, then we go against whatever the non-binding...
Well, that's what I'm talking about, that, that I'm understanding it. Still a pledge, if you...
I'm more with, with Peter. That's a lot of money. It'd have worked a lot of years to get that. For something that we don't know, if we put a quarter million dollars into, that anything will ever be there. I, I, I'm hard to vote on that for not knowing. I agree with the, with patching it up if we can. I'd love to be able to get that. But if we were to, if we were to go with a, a hope to spend a quarter of a million, I couldn't do that without it being on the ballot.
I, I think that there was a quote to patch the roof and secure the bell tower at one point. I remember if Jeff or Susan got it, but it was for considered less, of course. So, definitely is not, and...
Which is why, based on what, where I was going with this, was based on what we've gotten for results and lack of interest, that if it's the appetite of the board to try to save the building for eventual, that an, an investment of twenty-five thousand dollars beats two-hundred and fifty thousand if it secures it from, from continuing to deteriorate. Because the problem is if the, if another winter or so could take, if it takes the roof, the building's gone anyway, and we're in a demolition project, that's, that's where that is. So...
The reason for these bids was to find out how much it was going to be for the council's decision anyways.
So, if you want, we can look at language for a, a, a non-binding referendum. We can get quotes for the patch and repair, and you can determine at your next meeting which you want to do in terms of either or both.
We have a meeting, another meeting this morning.
Yes, we do.
I'd be in favor of that. Get, get the information, and next meeting, we make a final decision. Doesn't go on the ballot, we can vote on it.
We have time to get, to get quotes on a patch fix?
Between now and the end of, yes, we can.
And I think you have to look, look at the wording if you're going to go out to referendum. I mean, maybe the people want to tear it down. If that's the case, we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars to tear it down. So, we, I think we, we need all the information possible. Even if we're going out to the public, we need to have them informed of all the different options also.
Maybe if some people want to come to the meeting, the next meeting...
Well, we'll agenda and make sure that we, we have the news media here who can drum up some business for us, perhaps. And we're on TV, so everybody knows we're going round and round about it, so...
I mean, my phones aren't ringing. My phones aren't ringing. I'm clamoring for answers about this thing, or what to do.
Well, it's twenty-eight to thirty-five to tear it down with any asbestos removal. Maybe that side of the...
It's, it's a fifty-fifty, from what I was...
I think it's quite obvious that we don't really have the votes to go spend two-hundred thousand dollars to put a new roof and windows in it, so. We're not actually taking action, we're just asking the town manager to review language of a possible non-binding referendum question, and also to see if we can get some type of quotes before the next council meeting. Is that what I understand?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think we need to take a vote on that, do we?
That's just direction.
Okay. Item eight, agenda items. First one being to adopt or resolve 2018-12 to approve purchase and outfit a new police cruiser with up to thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be used from public, police equipment reserve account.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public?
Could we, wanted to apply that to just be the, from Yankee Ford? It's in the resolve itself, but on the, I think it's just in the motion.
Oh, you want to just go with the bid that we had from Yankee Ford?
Yes.
Yeah. From, from the, I'll amend the motion to take the police chief's recommendation to purchase the cruiser at the price that he received from Yankee Ford in South Portland.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
I just wondered if that was the SUV?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. I'd like to go back to the, the last item, Wilson Hall. I apologize to the public. Normally, open it up to public comment. What I'm going to do is to, we'll have a, a public comment when we come back with, at our next meeting to have input from the public on, on Wilson Hall. But if anybody has something they'd specifically like to say about Wilson Hall right now, feel free to say so. Does anybody like to say something about Wilson Hall? Yes, sir?
I'm not sure exactly how long back, but at one point, I remember there was some money appropriated for a group that was going to go out and try to get donations to see if the public had any interest in fixing this up. I don't know of any follow-up on it. Does anybody know if that group was able to raise any monies that would be used for any, any work or repairs on it, or?
I, I think they raised a minimal amount, maybe like four or five thousand dollars, and then that group kind of dissolved.
These, these are the people that, that had taken a pretty big interest in the building at the time, and they thought that maybe they could move further with it. And they just kind of petered out, resolved, whatever. I think that's kind of sending a message to this council that actually there's not that much interest. Even the people that are interested don't have the drive to continue and, and bring this up. So, I mean, that's just a point that I see in the whole thing. And, I don't know, maybe if we jumped off from that point, maybe we'd have some idea what we should be doing.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on it before we go on back to the agenda items? Yes, sir?
I believe the thing is a little bit higher than the number that you just quoted. And I was fed to do what's been done so far, removing the porch, placing material to make it solid. There wasn't a great deal of support going forward with putting a committee together to do it, because it wasn't clear what the town wanted to do with the building. I would throw out to you typically what you do when you receive bids like these, where it's, you ask them to do value engineering and/or anyone else to do value engineering on the project. You might be surprised at what you're doing, because these people know what's essential and what isn't. And they can put dollars to the decisions you want to make. And better to have it come from them than to come from people that don't know what they're talking about. But typically, when you have a building, a junkie puts six figures into it, that can be broken up into pieces, and the pieces that are essential can be identified. And I would suggest highly that this be value engineered. I know the project, which was somewhat more expensive, over a million dollars came out, the project of ten million dollars, ten percent, came right off the top, just in the first pass. And I suspect you're going to find some of the things that are in there could be delayed.
Thank you. Any other comments before I get back to the agenda items? And again, I apologize, I should have opened it up to the public when we were talking about Wilson Hall.
Yeah, I know that if nothing happens to Wilson Hall before the snow flies, the possibility of getting it, I mean, it's going to be very big.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to the agenda items. We're going to item B, to adopt resolve R.2018-13 to appropriate the five-year lease purchase of a highway truck. Susan?
As part of our capital improvement, this is Peter, actually.
Yeah, I just make, I just make a motion to approve based on the highway director's recommendation to go with fre liner with the lowest bid, and do it as a five-year lease purchase.
We have motion and second. Approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
It says here that you're going to have it bid it out because of the deal's lack of interest in the trade? Is that something that gets posted, or how does that work?
The truck will go up for, up for bid, for public bid, yeah. Because they didn't, they didn't get enough for a trade-in. They would, nobody would take it for a trade-in. Is that right, Jack? Yeah.
Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to adopt resolve R.2018-14 to approve pay requisition number twenty-four for the sewer treatment plant project in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty cents. To be, oh, go ahead.
Motion to approve, I'm sorry. Second.
This is going to be paid out of the grant proceeds. We have a motion and a second. Approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're going on to item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. Don't think we have anything on that. Approval of quick claim deeds and discharges. Quick claim deed for twenty-one Kobe Crossing to Crystal Duda.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the quick claim deed. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item eleven, town manager's report, department head reports. I think we all have a copy of that. Susan, you want to run those down?
Elan Consulting will be in Bucksport August fifteenth to the seventeenth to start work on the area-wide planning grant that we, that was received through Eastern Main Development Corporation. They will setting up some, they're setting up some preliminary interviews, and the steering committee for the grant will be meeting for the purpose of developing a timeline and schedule for public meetings, setting up social media, website, Facebook, et cetera, and going over the overall schedule for the project. Following this visit, information will be made available to the public for all upcoming meetings, where to locate the social media information and more. One of the main reasons Elan was selected in addition to their track record in these types of plans was the extensive public input and outreach that's part of their proposal. While this is a privately owned site, the plan needs to fit into the overall community as well. I talked about final completion of the sewer treatment plant and the open house on the twenty-fifth. There will be information going out to everybody about that. The Arts Festival is August twelfth. I encourage everyone to visit that this Saturday on the waterfront. It's sure to be a wonderful event. And also this Saturday, there's the Bucksport Historical Society's sixth historic house tour, being held from one to four on Saturday, the twelfth. Tickets for that can be obtained at Bookstacks, and details are available on the Facebook page for the Bucksport Historical Society. And finally, there was an excellent article in the Ellsworth American this week about the current and future programming being done by the YMCA as part of their contract with the town of Bucksport to provide recreational opportunities for our residents. I am pleased that the Y is taking a proactive approach on offerings for our residents. The tradition of offering a variety of programming done by former recreation director Tim Emery is being carried on and expanded, which is great for people of all ages in this community.
Thank you. Any questions on any of those items?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is Elan, this is the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's not coming out of the town's pocket?
No, this is the grant from EPA.
Are they going to have all of the information that's been gathered, which is substantial, since the mill closed, reports by Mr. Rabson, myself, and others, so on and so forth? Are they going to have all of that information?
They have asked for all reports, studies, input, et cetera, that, that the town has in regard to the site.
Okay.
So, yes, the answer's yes. They will have all that stuff.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll go on to item twelve. Set a public hearing or hold public hearings. Approve of any licenses or permits.
We have to propose two ordinances.
Shall a public hearing for the, an ordinance be adopted? Amendments to Appendix K of the Bucksport Town Code, such ordinance being for the purpose of bringing Appendix K into compliance with changes made to the DEP Charter 1000 Guidelines for Municipal Shoreland Zoning Ordinances in January of 2015, making changes, dimensional standards, and certain zoning boundary lines in the downtown shore zone district to a revised timber, and also to revise timber harvests. So, we need to set a...
This is the...
This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, okay. Declare the public hearing open. Any comments from the public on this? If not, declare the public hearing to close. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance amendment to the Appendix K of the Bucksport Town Code. Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item thirteen, discussion items not on the agenda for council or the public.
We need to set a public hearing for the other two.
We have to set a public hearing.
And we also have to have licenses too, then we get licenses, okay. Just jab me. Okay, we need to set a date for the public hearing?
Two, the two public hearings for the ordinances that were introduced at the top.
We can do that at the next council meeting, right?
We have time to advertise for those, Jeff.
Okay, we do have a license. It's for Terry Roll, doing Terry's Produce. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the vendor's business license for Terry Roll, doing business Terry Produce. And where's that going to be set up?
That's the one that's out by giving vendors a store. It's been a while.
Okay, we had a motion and a second, right? Anything further from the public?
Is this a required license, extended license, this guy's there for produce?
Yes.
Is it, is it not produce from his own farm?
What's that?
It's not his own produce. It comes from his own farm?
It's, it's pro, it's required licenses, yes.
Anything further for the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, now we can go on to discussion items, not on the agenda for council or the public. Open it up to the public first. Yes, sir?
My name is Chris Johnson. I live in North Bucksport. I want to thank Susan for her comments about the Great Pond. I've been here almost every meeting over the last two months, urging people to please plan to attend that. I consider it a, a large economic issue as well as an environmental issue for this town, and we have a lot of planning going into it. We have shuttle rides available. We'll have refreshments. We'll have ribbon cutting. I think it's a great opportunity to expand development, economic as well as community environment, through other parts of the town. So, I'm, I'm really hoping you folks can make it from ten to twelve on next Saturday. Thank you.
Any other discussion items from the public? Yes, ma'am?
I'm...
Go ahead.
My name is Holly Ellis. I'm not sure if Tony Gross and I are on the agenda for tonight. We have land on the Bucks Mills Road. Jeff gave us a permit last year to put our mobile home in. At that time, we did not have the money to do our well septic and leach field. We knew we could not live there, but that was our only home. We spent all our savings to move there. We had a generator for the winter. We had a quarter potty from frost septic, and we carried our water. The town took us to court back in May, on the thirtieth. But in the court papers that the town had drawn up, it said subsequently on Article Five, and I can show you this, I highlighted it, the defendants failed to obtain... I highlighted it, "The defendants failed to obtain a permit to install the subsurface wastewater disposal system, drainage system, or a well to provide pressurized and heated water. I paid the town with my credit card receipt in hand on the ninth of March for my septic permit. Jeff Hammond failed to sign that until we got served papers that were drawn up in April." Jeff Hammond then took us to court and the town, waited until we got served before he signed said septic permit. He had that twenty-seven days prior to drawing up these papers and having the town council pay for a lawyer. We have been busting our butt and working very hard, paying cash out of our own pocket because we could not get financing. We have perfect credit, but never used it. We pay cash for everything. My cause was financing us, I have all the paperwork for my cause. He unfortunately backed out on the deal after two thousand two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars cash and would not sign a contract. He put in our well and dug a hole. I have a hole my grandkids can fall into at my home. We have dished out thousands of dollars. Wingham Paul Line Construction, by the grace of God, signed a contract. We have power. Garrett McAllen is installing his part and the meter this weekend. I have a whole list of things that Jeff Hammond and I have discussed. He hung up on me the twenty-fourth, said he did not feel comfortable having a discussion with me, encouraged me not to come to the town council meeting, asked me why I wanted to come and talk to you folks, said you don't need to bother to be there. I called Susan. She said, "I encourage you to bring all your paperwork and be here." My cause backed out on my septic. By the grace of God, Barry Septic Services is signing a pump agreement, putting in our septic tank by the end of the month, and can I approach and give this to Susan so she has it?
Certainly.
Okay, but she asked for it. We are working very hard, we will be done everything in thirty days. That's all we ask for is not to go back to court, give us thirty more days and our land will be complete. That's all we ask for. We are not a nuisance, we are not a bother. Our land is neat, our land is clean, Jeff could have come in my home that day. Anybody in the town, you walk in my house at five o'clock in the morning is spotless because I am a neat freak and I am a nurse. I take care of people. I put my home here, I work at Jed Proudie's, I take care of the elderly in this community. Tony busts his butt and he paints. My daughter walked in on that conversation that he rudely hung up on me on. Don't feel comfortable talking to you, click. I have grandchildren. I have no address to give anybody if my grandchildren get hurt on my property. I have to give them Garrett McAllen's address and tell them to take a left halfway up the driveway. We have put thirty-five thousand dollars into our property, cash. We do everything in here, we do our banking in Bucksport, we are functioning members of Bucksport. I gave Jeff my address, my work order number. He failed, I, I talked to Veronica at CMP, I can give you guys all this to read if you want, you know, everything. And time and time again, he asked me, "What's your address? What's the name of your street you want to be?" I'm starting to feel comfortable with giving you an address. Then he'd read nags on it. All I'm asking is for thirty more days to get our land complete, you know, so we can be in our home. We are happy here. This was family, the Gross family land, and Tony got it back in ninety-eight, and we're making a home out of it. We're not a nuisance to anybody, we're not criminals. We are functioning people that work every day just as hard as you guys. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You want, she need that back, or?
No, she can, this is my copy. There's an executive session on the agenda this evening that deals with this, that where you will be talking to the attorney that represented you or that signed the complaint for this, but that is the executive session, and so she's giving you information that you can take into consideration when you talk to your attorney about what you, what steps may, you may wish to take next.
Any other discussion items from the public? Yes, sir.
I'm Christopher White, live out on Ducko Road, may happen to be part of the Heart and Soul Program, and I know that you folks did get, excuse me, you did get a report from Nancy, and I'm not going to go through all that, but I just want to make a couple of comments of my own. First of all, I think this town is one lucky town to have the kind of support that's being, coming forth. I mean, it's, not only the people in the Heart and Soul Program, but the other organizations too, and the Rosens providing that store headquarters that has become a very central piece of all the operations that are going on in this town. You've got, just alone in Heart and Soul, you've probably got thirty-some-odd people that are working very, very hard, collecting stories and collecting data and doing all that stuff that you've been reading about. And this is a huge success, the number of stories they've collected is well over two-hundred, they've got close to three-hundred to continue analyzing. And so, doing this, the representatives from the Orton Foundation over in Vermont have been very good at providing support, and I think whatever we can do as a town to show appreciation to organizations like the Orton Foundation and also Main Community Foundation goes a long way. A pat on the back helps bring stuff, you need to let people know you're getting stuff and let people know that you appreciate it. And that's all I'm trying to say there. I also think that now getting away from Heart and Soul, I think you need to realize that there's a lot of good workers here in this town that have been doing some wonderful things. Just this last week, I had somebody contact me that I hadn't seen in fourteen years, and they spent a week down in the Marina, came here because he had to get in an airplane and get to California, and your folks in the Marina took care of this family for a whole week, took care of his wife and guided them around and helped them get garbage here and there and all of that good stuff. I also, just in the last two weeks, have walked the Silver Lake Trails, and I've done that for a number of years, but I want to tell you that your Public Works people have been down in there doing some wonderful work in the last two or three weeks, and I noticed just this today that they're still at it. And I would invite any of you, if you have not been on those trails down in back of the highway garage, take some time and go to, go try it out. It's not as nice and smooth as, you know, the trails up around the school, but I got to tell you, it's a really good place to get exercise and let dogs run, and I've run into people there from Canada camping, that kind of stuff. So, it's one of those deals, you've got it there, take care of it, maintain it. And I've also, in the last week or so, just running around and hearing people, business people in town showing some creative thoughts coming forward, and I think you need to, you know, encourage that. And I also encourage you on five-thirty the twenty-first of August to come to this meeting that Bob Carmichael is running, which is coordinating and talking with all the various organizations that have been contributing to these motions that Heart and Soul seems to be a very integral part of, but it's this gathering people together and sharing thoughts and finding out where things are going, and I got to tell you, Bob Carmichael, the last time he did this, did a hell of a job, and I would love it if some of you people would come and contribute and at least listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Wayne, am I just recently bought a property on Fourteen Buck Street, and it's pretty obvious there's no water or septic, but I got a septic bill for five hundred dollars. I don't know if that's...
Can you bring that into the town manager to talk about this?
It's not, nothing for this, I guess. I was just asking.
I'm not aware, I didn't know that there was a problem with, what's the address?
It's Fourteen Buck Street. It's kind of a dilapidated building I'm trying to restore, and there's not going to be anybody living here for a little while, so.
If you come in to see me, I'll take a look at the account and see what it is, I don't have any...
Does this go, does this go way back to you were dealing with a fellow down in Massachusetts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
How did the house transfer ownership without all of its stocks being in a row?
Because it wasn't done through a...
Yeah, he, he got the tax bill too, which will be coming to me because I do have the warrant to deed to the place, so.
Come in and see her.
I'll come in to see you.
Sorry, town manager, you tag your...
Thank you.
Any other discussion items from the public?
What happened?
After the agenda was posted, I learned from the town attorney that the next item you're about to take up is citing the wrong section, Title One, so I have correct language for you to cite when you get to that section.
It's Section E instead of Section H.
When we go here, right?
Yeah, this is the right one.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir.
First, out at the dump, from the dump to the town garage, something's being dragged back and forth there. I'd say wheels locked up on something, and it's just been going on today. This is like, it looks like probably two or three trips, same thing, one thing. And why did they put the rain grooves in the brand-new hot top out by East Bucksport And I wanted to ask who...
Mike, could you repeat that last question, Jim? I didn't...
They, they put new hot top down, and then somebody come out and put rain grooves in it, it looked like. I don't know what they are.
We put some shoulder material up, and the only way we have to do it is to dump it in the road and sweep it off the side for some scratches and...
And on this, this Elan group, who will be interviewed by those people? Do they have a list of people already, or?
They, they have a list, a starting list, and then they, I will be developing more as they have public meetings to talk to people, but it's, the process is going to be open to anyone who wants to be part of it. That's the, there will be public meetings that do. The interview, they're, the initial interviews are with, I'm trying to think of them, there's, I know that there's, they're setting up a session with the media that they're going to talk to, they're setting up a session with some major businesses owners in the community that are already in business here.
So, will they ever get down to the common, or are we just gonna?
Yes, sir. That's why I said that there would be, the public, is common or uncommon.
Yeah, thank you.
And it would be helpful if the folks who want to get involved in this do get involved, the public. They know that we're going to have the public meetings, they need to come and say their piece and give us their, give this group their suggestions. Participatory democracy is always the best.
Any other discussion items from the public?
I can answer, and I'm sure Jay, about the skid marks during the road from the transfer up to highway. One of those old storage trailers was removed from the transfer station and looked to be a bit of difficulty getting that out of there, but also since that time, Jay and his people have gone in and erected a, the yellow...
Barrier.
Barrier in there, so that's, to the best of my knowledge, part of what happened up there with the, getting rid of that old storage trailer.
Yeah, yeah. I was in there today, it looks very nice.
Any other discussion items from the, from the council? Yes, sir.
One thing in particular that, you know, a few weeks, maybe months ago now, we had the folks in from the state and all of the, all of the departments across the board, police, fire, the, you know, we received that award from the state, and as promised, from the fire department, may have gone unnoticed, but in here, there's a bullet that Bucksport has received an upgrade on their ISO insurance, and what that means is that homeowners should see a decrease in their annual insurance program, so they promised it to us, and it has been, it's taking place, so you may want to check with your insurance companies about that, how it applies. The other thing is, I pretty religiously read this, this week, for this week's meeting, the packet has a hundred and thirty-three pages in it, simply stated woof, it was a lot of stuff, and I rely on the town manager to check to make sure everything's okay regarding the facility up the street and the payments and everything, but while the police chief is still here, I've been looking for it, and to be honest, I can't find it, but I think I read in the packet, chief, that it's going to be, you're going to need some monies coming up to replace bulletproof vests for the officers, that they have a lifetime of a certain period, and then they have to be swapped out with newer ones?
That's correct, I put that in my CIP for the coming year.
Okay.
And we normally get a grant to offset the CIP, so they pay for most of it.
Okay, that was all, to me, officers having bulletproof vests is the same as a fire engine going out with hose on it. It's, and if that grant doesn't come through, then we should move money wherever it takes to get all the officers with the up-to-date vests, so, it's my two cents. Thank you.
Any other discussion items from the council?
I just wanted to say, when there are matters that, that come up, as these people have come in, I appreciate seeing people come in and to talk to us about it, so I just wanted to let everybody out there know that if there is something, please don't hesitate to come in and ask for help, for guidance and stuff, so.
Okay, we're going to go on to item fourteen, we're going into executive session, we'll make a recommendation, go into executive session, persuading to Title One, Article four oh five E pertaining consultations between a body or an agency, its attorneys concerning illegal rights and duties of the body of the agency, pending completion of...